And we. Well.
We're gonna do a short meeting.
Good evening, everyone. It is six oh two on Tuesday evening. This is Robert Stevenson. Uh, we're gonna be calling to order the Southwood Collin Grandville Regional School District School Committee meeting for tonight, the twenty third of January. Can I get a motion to enter into the meeting?
So.
Can I get a show of hands at any? Eric, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of Canada. Which is standing as a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Canadian that grew. That would be, I missed the, I missed the words, okay? One time, I, we have to do this one slow, not tonight, so I didn't come prepared. We'll do like, uh, citizenship questions that I have. And see if everybody at the table passes.
No way.
I can feel there'd be a lot of citizenship being revoked.
Can you cross the?
Yes, the. Um, okay, opening ceremony, Stevenson needs to practice pledge of allegiance. All right. Uh, consent agenda. Anybody have any questions, concerns on that? This is the speak now or forever hold your peace section of the movement. Um, break warrants. We got those going around. If everybody can sign those, it'd be great. People can get paid, hopefully. Um. Uh, correspondent, Superintendent Willard.
Just quickly, um, we just received an email from Mars. The governor's budget should be coming out shortly, which is what we base our district budget on. Uh, we have gotten notice that usually the governor's budget is usually the most conservative of the three, and usually by the time it goes in the house, ways and means. Um, we get more money. They're saying to expect this year, it's going to be the flip flop that. Um, the governor is more confident about the state revenue than the houseways and means. And so this year, the governor's budget may be the most, um. Giving of the, uh, budgets that get approved.
And we need to expect tightening.
Well, she does the final approval of it, but, um, yes. Okay. We don't, we're not expect a lot more.
If she doesn't like the ways and needs answer, is she able to override that and pass it anywhere? It's gotta go back to them?
No, you took the citizen test.
Yeah, but every. I can tell you what happens at the federal level, but not at the state level.
I just decided off on the federal budget. Um, I'm just thinking that it might not go up much from the governor's budget. That's what I'm thinking.
They're gonna have to pass it. They would have to pass it both houses.
I, I saw the governor this weekend speaking and, uh, seemed very, uh, mystic. But, uh.
You got a chance to talk or are you just?
No, 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 I was, I went down to the Mass Municipal Convention, Boston Street.
In my free time. She is super confident.
He is super confident. We're very lucky that we have a lieutenant governor that was mayor of Salem for some of the year and understands citizen. A fellow that is advising her.
All right, comes to our first public comment section. I mean, nobody in the room that's not us, we're gonna pass that. Uh, okay.
My turn.
Your turn. Solo again. Think we still have a second school representative, but he is MIA right now.
No.
Okay, so we'll find out where Lucas is. Hopefully, we don't have to put a name or whatever. Go ahead.
Okay, so on February sixth and seventh, the high school will be having the physics and the biology end paths. Um, last week, we had our finals. We had I read as well with, or no, I read was two weeks ago. It all went pretty well. Um, including the eighteen language and literature mock in thames. Um, the middle school also had a dance on Friday, um, half day. I don't remember that. Um, girls' basketball has an upcoming game away Thursday against Mount Everett. Um, mock trial have their first try yesterday and we won.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have our next meet, next week against the Chinese Emergent Tool. Hopefully, we'll win that too. Um, boys' basketball has an away game tonight against Palmer. Hawkeye has a game tomorrow night against McCann. Um, the ski team actually has a meet or not a meet, a race, say, as of right now. Um. Indoor track had a couple meets, including this past Sunday. Wrestling has been doing pretty well. And, um, I don't know, I think Lucas has already had his interview for Mazzar and is, um, joined, but I just had mine Sunday. I will be joining the legislative committee and they're currently pushing for, um, they just spoke in front of the legislature for. Requiring, um, financial literacy classes in order to graduate. And then also they're working on requiring CPR in order to graduate every single year.
Very good.
So. Can I just add to the track meet? Indoor track, Friday went out to the Regigus Stadium in Boston. It was a fifty-two school meet. It was a, uh, four by four. Or four by relay, so it wasn't individuals you, you, well, you went in your team. Um, the girls took fourteen place in the four by fifty out of fifty-two schools.
Wow.
Yeah, she was one of them. She was fantastic. And then in the boys' long jump, um, Jordan, I don't know his last name, he took first and then another Southwood boy took seventh. So they had a really successful.
So we won the long jump.
We won the long jump, out of fifty-two schools.
Out of fifty-two schools.
Yeah, so they had a very good, very long meet, but it was good.
Very good. You all done, you all done?
Yeah.
That's it. Nothing else going on?
Yeah.
New midterm, right? All new classes.
Yeah, so we have no school last, or last week, so.
If we can.
That's really.
All right, well, thank you very much. Let us know if we find Lucas. All right, policies. So everybody would have received in their email section I. Uh, we started that today, um, in the policy committee. Um, so we're working our way through that. We got, we didn't get too far in it. It is just so that everybody, I'm sure. Not everybody's aware, it is a heavy section. Um, so it may take us a couple meetings to probably go through I. Um, and then the next one, J and K, they're, they're not, once we get past K, I think it gets a little easier, right?
I think K would be like the last one.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's really easy after K. Um, all right, so that's it for policy.
Did you miss one? Educational?
No, sorry, not doing that tonight.
Oh, thank you.
I, I did not, I. Yeah, we, uh, we did not have the person coming for that, so we're gonna skip that and hopefully do that in an upcoming meeting. Um, so, action item, Superintendent Willard.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as listed above, recommended.
So.
Any questions? You got a lot of questions. Show your hands, approve the motion. Erin, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. Just to, we need to. We're moving. Uh, report, Superintendent Willard, turn to suite, please.
Um, I just wanna let you know that I did start our boots on the ground tour. Um, I, I do that every other year, at least every year sometimes, but I don't think we did it. I know we didn't do it last year, um, because of the office turnover, but boots on the ground tour is where I set up times that I meet with people individually. They come to me with, um, concerns with what they'd like to see, individual needs, group level needs, grade level needs. Uh, and then I had an opportunity to talk to them, um, and really be transparent about the budget, about what's going on. Um, I'm encouraging them to get involved in the process, um, and to show up at meetings and to use their voices. Um, I, because if we don't show that we are really concerned and interested in approving the budget, that it doesn't really send the right message to the people who do show up. So we need to be active participants in the budget process to come to ask questions and to understand the budget process, because it's not simple. Um, so, um, so far, you know, a lot of their concerns are on the mental health of students and, uh, just additional supports. Um, for our kids that are coming in with more and more needs and I think we're gonna address that in this budget, so.
So when you're saying, um, the people that you speak to, you're, you're talking about step teachers and, um, and, yeah, and staff. Excellent.
Perfect. Shut your mouth. Anything other than?
Yeah, so last Friday, I attended, uh, the Mass West Conference, which is the Mass Association of School Business Officers. I saw that LPBC. They had a, a, a great agenda, which focused on Medicaid, transportation, special ed, and gas and oil projections. So, uh, I got some great feedback of what we can do within district to, to make sure that we're maximizing, uh. The refunds that we get from the state that are available to us. And, uh, set up some meetings where they're gonna come out and meet with myself and Special Director, uh, Mrs. Gunn, to make sure we're doing all that we can to, as I said, max, maximize. The funds that are available to us. Uh, our end of the year report audit is February thirteenth and fourteenth. Uh, Howard and Sullivan will be on site, uh, working on that for us. And Superintendent Willard and myself attended the LPBC, uh, budget meeting this morning, where we got, uh. Quite a bit of information from LPBC on, on the cost of doing business with them next year. Um, I was thoroughly impressed with, not only the presentation that, that. Um, Anna Bishop did from LPBC, but Superintendent Willard and the other superintendents in the collaborative, uh. Their questions and their pushback and their advocacy for their individual districts. It's.
Good.
They, they, it was a good, they owe their, their LPBC to, um, their feet to the fire on how funds are spent and how their budget is, is, um.
I'm assuming you talked about acceptance and making sure that kids from our school are being accepted, kids outside of the collaborative and.
We did.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And if you, I know we've, we've talked about this privately, but just to say this in public, if you need school committee support or backing, if you run into an issue with that, you let us know. And we will do our own little phone campaign over there if we need to.
So what we've asked for, for our next superintendent's meeting is, because we had all the numbers today, and I won't go long-winded. Is, uh, we looked at the number of students who come from South Padley, East Hampton, and other districts. And we wanted, so we asked for them, was we wanted to see the number of our students who were on a waiting list compared to the number of, whether delta of the number of students that were accepted from the other towns.
Yeah.
Uh, because we do get a fifteen percentage, fifteen percent off, um, based on the revenue from the other districts, but. What are we more interested in getting like this fifteen percent off or getting all of our kids? And it's really a philosophical. Um, Lon Meadow and myself are really pushing on having all of our students accepted, and we'd rather pay a little bit more to have all of our kids be accepted. We think that there's a compromise in there somewhere. But, so that's gonna be at our next meeting.
So we wanna compromise whether our kids get into.
We want our kids to be able to get in, but.
Yeah.
They don't have to say East Hampton and South Padley, you can't come. We think that there's middle ground there.
There's three schools, uh, paying out a district tuition to that, and we benefit, the, the other districts benefit from that.
Why don't they just join?
It's way too expensive by it. Oh, no. We own, you, we own the collaborative.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that was good. I would vote for the making sure all our kids get in.
That's where, um, Lon Meadow's the money.
Yeah, it wa, it was, it was a great presentation and I, I, I will do, I can do it next week, uh, or our next meeting to go through the presentation if. You need me to go up to Tolland or Granville to do it there as well and to get a really, really in-depth insight of, of where our money goes at LPBC. This does a wonderful job.
I think that that would be beneficial. Um, I think that it would behoove. The, um, town leaders, um, to understand why, um, we are a part of, of that. And what we as a district and in turn that individual towns get from that partnership and that relationship.
Hmm.
I think it is important to understand that it's more than just vocational school options. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, you may wanna have like, uh.
I have Allen cut out.
A small option available for that roundtable meeting next week, 'cause that may be helpful. 'Cause that.
To, to go through that, that.
That topic may come up, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good idea to do it there.
I mean, not, you don't wanna have like an hour.
No, well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just a little snippet. Hey, look, this is a, I can bring and meet with you on an individual basis to go over this in much more detail.
Right, I, I love to, more, but I want you to understand why this is such an asset for us.
You have a ten thousand foot view of what we talked about, the benefits, the costs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I could do a more detailed, if you will, that way there's, there's some data there that we give them.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
All right, awesome. All right, negotiations. We got nothing going on. We're waiting. We had a meeting on thirty-first that's getting rescheduled, right?
Yes.
Okay, finance, we may or may not have it tomorrow. Uh, Erica, anything?
Tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, I've got a quarterly meeting coming up soon where we're gonna talk about the electronic buses and all that fun stuff, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Honestly, I'm gonna be bringing some questions to that, because in light of all the fun little Teslas that are stranded all over the world because of the frozen, my question's gonna be. What's gonna happen when we hit minus ten or whatever out here? Are these ten buses actually going to work? And what's the backup? And what are the costs that it's gonna cost LPB to actually put whatever chargers that we're gonna put in there? Oh, it's free. Okay, good.
They're not managed.
No, no, that's, that's.
He did amazing presentations.
Because it's like, okay, it's great to get all this stuff, but if it's not gonna work in the winter and it's gonna cost us a gajillion dollars to put the, to put the chargers in, what are we doing?
They're already starting to talk about going after ten more.
Yes.
Electric buses, um, but Alvin was fantastic. He was like, we don't have the first ones. He's like, how can we go out and make sure that they can work before we go get ten more?
How can we? Yeah.
Right. Right.
I'm worried, like, if it's minus twenty out there or cold, are these things working?
Send one bus up to Tolland.
Yeah.
No, the electors aren't going to Tolland. We're not getting any electric.
No.
We don't want any of those buses. They can come all in over hand for stuff. I don't, you don't want them here.
We're not. At long time, yeah. We don't.
Um.
Because I, I know what works, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but no.
Listen, there's like, there could potentially be some nice savings to transportation in the coming years because of the plan that they have in place around electric buses.
They work.
Yeah, it's.
They don't work, it's not gonna say it was a.
Yeah.
Uh, policy, we had our meeting today. We already talked about that. Buildings and grounds, we need to.
Yeah, yeah, I can bring him a call.
Uh, yeah, we need to get an update from our buddy.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, IOT.
We have, well, we've got something about, it was on Zoom. Um, so I kind of checked notes while I was going. Uh, anyway, so they came with, 'cause we knew there were gonna be some changes up at, uh, the regional school, particularly with seventh and eighth grade currently. 'Cause they said, uh, a different IOT meeting may kind of hint at the fact that they wanted to create a, a new, uh, class pertaining to writing. 'Cause they're looking through our MCAS, or, yeah, MCAS data, and we're not very strong in that subject. Um, and might kind of take the load off of ELA teachers and have this class specifically writing oriented. So to do that, they're talking about kind of changing the world language program. Currently, there is world language is a one A and one B. And then seventh and eighth grade, you do one A and seventh and one A and, or one B, excuse me, and eighth, and combine that to just one year in eighth grade. Um, other districts do it that way. Other districts don't offer world language until high school, so we're in the same realm as other districts in our area. Um, and then doing that writing course, which would be kind of more, it's kind of my very fluid as far as. Um, students from other, if they're coming into our district, like where would we put them? They could go in there and it wouldn't be just, um. Like, it was like another kid coming out of district into world language, it's kind of hard to place them, say, in the seventh, the eighth grade one B class when they didn't do one A. This will be easier to incorporate those kids. Um, we would need to hire a new teacher. Um, but you wouldn't, you would only need one world language teacher instead of two, so that kind of one for one.
So, so why are we taking writing away from the English language future?
We're not, we're adding for writing in.
Because if, they have to do so much in ELA.
Okay.
That, that way, if they can focus more on having like professional language, organize, organizing your thoughts and putting them correctly onto paper.
But the writing's only gonna be in seventh or eighth grade?
Well, and then that writing class will, no, and the writing class will then incorporate some, like, they're learning about, I don't know, something in social studies. They can take that subject and bring it into writing. To, to make like essays from it.
Great, but what year is the writing class gonna be? Seventh grade.
And if it, there's eighth graders who need it, we can fluidly put them in there if they're not ready for it.
What if we get eleventh graders in here?
Yeah, well, well, that, that's a different issue.
That's a whole different problem, right?
Is that what we're, is that what we're identifying that we're having?
No, 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 this is, like, the end passes, the, it's the, it's the seventh and eighth grade end pass.
Yeah.
That.
That isn't what we, uh, okay, that makes more sense now. Like, we, why are we doing this seventh grade? 'Cause they, the end passes later on too.
But they just got started in third grade.
Right.
Right, so they don't just take it, right, they don't just take it and test to graduate. They started, not unique to artists.
But we're gonna be phasing out French, because it's the, yeah, sorry, 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 French people. Um. We don't have a, a, a very high enrollment and. If you're in it, you're, you're good. Um, it, it's, it's becoming too difficult to, um, meet the needs of all the students. We have one French teacher, seventh through twelve.
Through time.
And.
Yeah, so, yeah, we do that too.
Okay.
We're still working over, trying to figure out like our Mitchmack kids, um, ones who maybe are, you know. Were very well-versed writers versus ones who are, and should we put them together? Should we not? Like, there was a big discussion on it, so who knows? But that's a word that matters.
Maybe the really good writers could just take French.
It is a world language, yeah.
Math also came saying that they want to change how AP Calculus currently is. I guess it is full year currently going down to one semester. 'Cause now they also have AP Pre-Calculus, and many of the things that are taught in pre-calculus need to be taught in regular calculus. So I guess a new teacher is coming, has decided to take that on and is very excited about it and. Gonna do that. The only issue being that, and I guess it happens, the other AP classes, I don't have a kid up there, so you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. That, like, say you take an AP class in the fall, but your test isn't until the spring, but usually the, the spring teachers will then have like. A little refresher thing, or, you know, like, they help those kids who were in the fall. They can join there.
So currently, we have a full-year AP Calc, but we've recently added, and I believe it's new this year, AP Pre-Cal. And with the addition of AP Pre-Cal, we're realizing that AP Calc doesn't need to be full year, right? Is that the?
Yes, yeah.
Oh. But if you did AP Pre-Cal and then you did AP, AP Calc, then when you take the test, you should rock the AP.
The AP.
And then.
Right, when you're still.
It's so fluid, you gotta do it, so. Right, right, oh, you're saying if you're taking both tests in the same year.
Same year.
But are they gonna do that? Or are they gonna do like AP, are they gonna do AP Pre as two years and AP?
They were starting this back to back. Back to back and.
That'd be neat.
Yeah. Oh, God. I don't know how that works up here. Um, and then we talked a little about, about CTECH, so I guess ninth grade currently just goes one semester. For the year, and they, for like exploration purposes, and they're talking about sending ninth grade for a full year. Um, for the, this upcoming school year, it'd be hard of trying to figure out how to get what, you know, 'cause they come back to us for their English, science, whatnot. Um, how to figure their, uh, schedules out. What's it? It was gonna be.
We're gonna need to make sure they've got enough time to get all their prereqs.
Right, so they, they, it sounds like they're just not gonna have any, uh, electives in their schedule. It'll be like they're gonna, right, exactly. So they're gonna take, you know.
All that CTEC, CTEC.
Math and science one semester, English and social studies the next, whatever the heck is required.
But they can't take foods.
Right, right, they can't take foods.
If they culinary it.
Right, there you go. They're probably better than their food class.
Well, I guess that during MCAS state, that CTEK that have meets their gym requirement, so they don't need to do that.
It does. Say it again?
And, and cast it, or some, some, Desi, who, who says this? Desi thinks that CTEK meets their gym requirements.
Cause they're often active. If they're not, it's certainly.
My fault started going in and out.
So they have to walk to the bus.
No, they're often. Actually, they were belaying the other day. I was like.
Like math, science, history.
Yeah, they're like, just incredible, yeah.
Yeah.
So that solves one problem.
I, I talked a little about the innovative pathways, but as I was driving, I kind of. Spot, spot that one. But, yeah.
Well, this. Everybody still saying. All right.
We have an upcoming meeting, the first, on February first.
Technology.
Yeah.
Whenever are things getting replaced? They're supposed to be all falling apart now after.
Was that cap checked?
Yes.
Do we still have, uh, service?
Yes.
Soon is, soon?
Soon, very soon.
Okay, I was great, 'cause we wanna do it before they start working.
I like how everybody keeps looking at.
Capital meeting, I'll jump on this.
Okay.
Good news around the capital, um, borrowing from FY twenty-four is that we're at five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, right? That's what it was?
Yeah.
Anything over five hundred thousand dollars triggers a threshold of, um, some fees. And, and lawyer fees that would have to go into, um, securing this bond, but because we have identified. Four hundred and fifty for the technology project and sixty-five thousand for the truck, even though it's splitting it, um, they okayed it for us, so we have. Less fees, less fees, no fees. Let's pay, let's, uh.
Yeah, it's a win-win.
It's a win-win. That is good for us.
Is Fox anything yet, or we?
Well, we're still waiting, but I did, I said, I went down to the Mass Municipal. I said I was part of the capital expenditures committee slash regional school committee, or they allowed me in. Now, you can go now. But, uh, getting back to the governor, she did, uh, emphasize the importance of schools, rural schools in particular.
There you go.
And, and, uh, she said the importance of rural aid to school.
Wow.
All right, she came out with that. Been talking about expenditures, purchasing. They're gonna be filing a bill to make the, uh. The amount of money where you have to file and go through all those procedures.
Yeah.
Increase that dramatically, and that got a standing ovation from the crowd.
Yeah, that probably hasn't been adjusted from.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy. You know, um, I spent most of my time on solar and electric, you know. Uh, going to different seminars and talking to, uh, different vendors at the trade show. And talking about the electric buses. That was one whole seminar. Basically, some of the more affluent communities that have switched all over.
Yeah.
To electric are, have been very successful. But, uh, one of the speakers, you know, her full-time job is just to analyze that for her community. And like she's doing, she's interviewing all these schools that have done it, and, uh, after a year, she will be putting forward a proposal. And of course, uh, this was part of the Green Community Seminar, so basically what they're saying. Is we need to start planning now for the future. Uh, because we're going electric. We're not gonna have any.
Okay.
Carbon-based, uh, fuel that is now. And, uh, when we're looking for it. Furnaces, lighting, everything, that we should be planning that now. Uh.
I think we should do, follow the.
Good news.
The wrong rate, they can trust, verify, and we go along.
Yes, good news, uh, green communities, because Tolland and Granville are green communities. They can start applying for grants for the school now. Uh, we can't apply for the big stuff, because Southwick still hasn't expended the hundred and forty thousand that we got when we became a green. But soon as we do that, then we can, uh, go forward. And, uh, last thing is food service vendors. I was looking and being creative down there. And, uh, I think they will be sending the even. Because.
For example?
For example. Uh, the, uh, filling stations for the water bottles, lease. They come in, take care of the whole thing, set them up, maintain them. Take care of it from nuts to bolts. Okay, uh, then I talked to, uh, some of the new security people I'm talking about. Security in the cafeteria, and maybe the security cameras would be. Going down hallways, entering the, uh, cafeteria or the entrances to the cafeteria from the outside. Um, they, they thought it, they could make it work for, uh, food services. So those were just two that I spoke to. Trying to think outside the box.
We're gonna have a mobile app for dining services for the kids.
I mean, uh. Who can manage everything, but, uh.
You've got a lot of great ideas. I encourage people to go things like that all the time.
I, every time you go there, you pick up something.
Tell people all the time, you gotta get out of here.
And just walking out one day, who did I walk out? Head of Maya. So we were talking about, uh, all the issues.
Who's that?
Our insurance.
Oh, my, oh, the head of Maya.
The gentleman that started it. You know, and, uh, he's still the, the guru of, of Maya, Maya. Uh, so. Now, you, uh, if you can go, you gotta go, but, uh, this was also kind of a sentimental tour, because I took Carl to his first one.
Oh, Carl.
And I took Carl to his last.
And you're still here.
And I'm still here. And he's laughing. And he's got a big pension. And the March, March, March twenty-ninth or thirty.
And how are they, just a quick, you probably know better than us, how are they doing on finding a replacement?
No count.
Okay, okay.
No, I didn't talk, they hired, hired a firm. I talked to the, uh, gentleman and that, uh, uh, runs that firm. Uh, he was talking about, uh, he felt, this was his opinion, that the candidates that they're gonna have are gonna be a good fit for South. Are gonna be a good fit for Southwick uh with uh some experience. But of course, they're gonna get paid a lot more money. Well, I saw some of the offers that Carl got from other other uh communities that he stayed with up. And we're not gonna be able to get that.
Need an ideal subpersonal that, so we need a replacement. Alright, uh athletics, I gotta set up a meeting with Serena and uh Marion, so we'll get that. Yeah, okay, we'll get that done, uh legislatively, not right now. Public comment, we still have nobody here, so we can go through their old business. We have our roundtable next. Thursday at five thirty, right, in, where are we doing it? Library? In the library, we've sent out invites to all of the um selectmen. Um, this library here, power. Um, we did find um some interesting information in our policy review today. Uh that does indicate that we do have a policy that says that we're supposed to follow uh master law. Chapter seventy-five or seventy-four. Um, so it's interesting, we've got, our our regional agreement is silent on that. But the policy does, that was updated in two thousand fifteen, does specifically indicate. That we're supposed to be following that law and the law specifically indicates that. Districts are supposed to be paying for the out-of-district tuition for their kids, um so hopefully we can have a. Reasonable conversation with 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 everybody, um and we'll see if we can come up with a solution. Um try to get everything back on track, cuz obviously this is something from a budget perspective that we need to, we need to address and look at, but. Russ will be there, um all of you were invited, um hopefully we'll get a good response and a good turnout from the select boards. From the three towns, um I am cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to find some common ground for everybody. Uh we do need to address this and get this rectified, um and I guess we'll see what happens next Thursday. Um, anybody got anything for new business? Mr. Fox?
Uh, this is something where people have talked to me previously and then they came up again, it was past couple of weeks. Uh several people, they were very concerned about buses and and. Parents and students, particularly at Woodland School, arriving and leaving. Uh people crossing in front of buses, uh not obeying the laws. You know, concerning flashing red lights, things like that, um. I I I watched it the other day and uh I can I can see their concern, especially at Woodland. Uh I think it's an accident waiting to happen.
Because we've got cars going by with the buses.
Officer Sanders is always, he's always out there, but still, you watch those, like the, the um. Special, I won't say the special ed buses, but I know it's bus forty-four is the bus that has many children on it who are in special needs of some sort. So it takes a while for them to get off said bus, the buses parked, the lights out. And they just like to go around said bus. So the other day I saw Officer Sanders literally standing in the driveway. Making sure that no one goes by the bus because no one's obeying this bus that's it's taking forever, understandable, but however. Students are getting off of it.
That's what he does, he goes, he stands right behind with a.
It's like you say hi to him, and I'm like, what are you doing out there?
You guys don't have to, they don't have to get the kids off at the rec center anymore.
It's not right, that used to be the thing, right? And I still, when I personally go to the rec center and walk my preschooler in, so I'm not getting. And I have to get on my car to buckle up.
Yeah.
But everyone else can go in the line and the buses are in the line with them. It's not like powder mill, there's different entrances, right? In and out, so that everyone kind of gets in the same line. And then you do have to wait for the buses, um while there's the kid and the people aren't.
Some people are impatient.
They are impatient.
So I'd like, it's an easy solution, can we call the chief and have him put a cop there?
Sanders is there, so I, but I, when this happens every now and then, I do call chief and then he'll send a couple extra police officers up. And it will be good for about three months and then people are gonna go back to doing this.
Is is there some reason why we can't look at going back to the way it was?
Um, because parents complained that they had to park at the rec center and then walk. Their kids up and leave them at the door. We had multiple, multiple, multiple complaints.
It was a hassle, but wait till somebody gets hit and let's leave them.
Um, I did it for my kids.
So I think there's an easy solution, they either, we either go back, either they can do it the right way.
Or go back to them.
We start issuing tickets. And that'll stop them, and if they can't do that, then we go back to the old way and then. You're you're gonna, you're gonna deal with it, if if they can't control themselves, then we will solve the problem for you and make you go to the rec center.
Horrible fine for having a school bus.
Well, it's, but it's not just that, people go in, walk in between buses.
Oh.
Okay, so.
So it's those who complain who are breaking.
Which is why things can't be. Parking and the park, the regular parking lot. But you're not supposed to.
So so you got multiple things, I've seen it.
Well, cuz so you're not.
Park in the parking lot.
You cannot, you cannot park in the woodland parking lot, that's what the teachers and staff. If you're gonna drop off your kid, you have to park in the South of Rec Center parking lot and walk them. But I, I mean, back in, back in the day, I used to see that too, that sometimes they go down there and they'd be like, you cannot park down here.
Uh so they'll park in the parking lot, if there's an open space, walk them in.
Between the buses.
Which now creates pedestrian traffic that shouldn't be there because if they're in a, in a car, they exit right onto the sidewalk.
I think the people that spoke to me, and some of them. Are bus drivers. Are very concerned that there's gonna be an accident.
Okay, so can we, can we call the chief and let's see if we can get some.
It'll be a band-aid fix, like it always is, um if we really wanna make change, I think that next year we look at going back. But we get, I I'm letting you know, there are gonna be parents here out the door for public comment if we change the practice. I'm letting you know, it's gonna be.
Before COVID, we parked the rec center and walked best, but then we couldn't get out our cars during COVID, so this is what.
So we can make this real simple, I mean, I I will entertain a special meeting if they wanna all come and complain, but if they can't. Following the rules, then we will go back or we will take a vote and we will go back to what we did last year. Because we can't afford from an insurance perspective to have a kid or a parent or somebody get run over. Because somebody wants to park their car there and walk their kid through the buses, but they've specifically been told how to get in and out of the school. I I mean, am I off my rocker here or? Okay, so, so let's, let's call it, let's call the chief. Let's, let's put it in it, let's put it in it in the next email, the next email to say that it got brought to the school committee. And the school committee is very concerned with with the parents not following the proper arrival and departure schedule. And they've made it very clear that if the parents can't police themselves, we'll be forced to go back to the system that we had before. End of story.
And then give tickets to those who are offending.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the answer, that's the answer what to do, we ask the chief to go down there, park somebody down there for an hour. And usually the hundred dollar reward fines, they would do, that'll solve the same thing.
And our police works so collaboratively with us when it comes to state safety on arrival and dismissal, so. We may all be here in two seconds, they, they were amazing.
Is extremely forgiving and issue a number of warnings and do not like to break tickets if they don't need to. But I mean, look, maybe they give somebody and say, look, this is your last chance warning, cuz next week, we're coming back and anybody that does it is getting a ticket.
Well, they did, that's like at the rec center, equal parking, handicap parking, they were warned several times.
Yeah.
Then you get the big ticket and it's not a small ticket.
No, not that either.
No, no disobeying, stop sign, I'm blessed.
I mean, we did, this is, look, we need to make sure that we're protecting the kids and the people that are going out of the school, so if this causes, we do this and everybody's upset. They can go back and mark it on on this date at forty-four minutes after the hour that we had this discussion and they can refer to this. That their warning has been provided. Thank you, Mr. Fox, for bringing that up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's so many changes, there was here and we made a change where the buses are now not part of the parent loop anymore, that the buses are coming down. So the more information we get, we can make changes, now they come, yeah, they come back to the garage so that they're not in the parent line. And so we can keep making tweaks, but like, you have to know what's going on.
When the parents got told, for some, a lot of times, I was that preschool parent watching them going, what the heck? The powder mill parents would then go get in line at Woodland, they just picked up their powder mill kit, but then the. After in preschool, parents couldn't get to the sidewalk cuz they were on the front, you know, and. I was out here that just parked her car, I wasn't getting there half an hour early just to get my preschooler.
It's just that people, they they can, if they want to, park at the rec center and go pick up. We have a crosswalk, we used to have a cross.
It's not there anymore, it's not in guard anymore. You're right, there used to be.
There's not one anymore.
Now, if we, if we have to go back, I'm assuming we can get across the guard there.
Paid part of the police budget, the police.
Doesn't need work for food service company.
Matt's still thinking about that food. Alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Can I get a show of hands adjourned? Here and let the record show, the motion passes seven zero zero. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Good evening.
Good evening.